Mic check one two three, mic check one two three.
Good afternoon, everybody. We are currently waiting for another member to join us so that we have quorum. So we'll just be another moment. It's always the guy from facilities that's. Yes, we are live, David. Please time for your response. We are just waiting for another member to join in so that we have quorum so we can proceed. We'll just be a moment. Okay, good morning, or rather, good afternoon. We're a little past one o'clock. My name is Jeff Beedee. I'm going to be the chair for today's HWDSB City of Hamilton Liaison Committee. As we do have quorum present now, we'd like to call this meeting to order. And just as a quick reminder to those in the room here at 264 at City Hall that all electronic devices are to be switched to an on-audible function during committee meetings so as not to distract or take away from our meeting. So with that, if I could start by just acknowledging that I've got trustee and Chair of the Board, Maria Felix Miller, with us virtually. Also have trustee Don Danko, who is my co-Vice Chair of this committee. And in-house, I've also got Counselor Mark Taddison, as well as a variety of staff members that will, I'm sure, get to hearing from later on as the meeting proceeds. So with that, if I could have a mover and a secondor to approve the agenda as presented. And I'm going to look to Counselor Taddison and Trustee Danko. Thank you. Any amendments, conversation from committee meeting or committee members on the agenda? And seeing none, then if I could have a vote now, all in favor, a show of hands, please? And that's unanimous. Thank you, colleagues. We're going to move on to declarations of interest now. Are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none, we're now going to move to item five, which is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. And that is from April 3rd, I believe. Is that the 3 or 13? I'm not sure. Okay, it's the 13th, all right. It's April 13th, lucky 13, 2025. If I could have a mover and a secondor to adopt the minutes of the April 13 or 3rd meeting of the HWDSB Liaison Committee. And if I could have that from trustee Felix Miller, trustee Don Danko, thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, if I could have a show of hands, all in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you, colleagues. We're moving on to item number six, which is delegations, which we have none. Now going to move to items for information, starting with 7.1. This comes from City of Hamilton Report from Public Works, PW 25018, which is the 2024 Year-End Report on Community Bookings at Hamilton Stadium in Ward 3. It's been referred here by City Council at the meeting held on May 7, 2025. I would ask if members would like staff to provide an overview, which I believe we do want to see that overview, seeing some nodding heads. So if I could ask Manager Rob Gatto, Sports and Entertainment Facilities, to provide a brief overview? And then we'll proceed with questions after that. I'll turn it over to Manager Gatto.
Sorry about that. Good afternoon. Through the chair, Rob Gatto, Manager of Sports and Entertainment with the City of Hamilton and overlooks Hamilton Stadium. Just a quick overview, a good news story for community hours for Hamilton Stadium. We had over 50, we had a total of 1,000 hours of community usage for 2024. And for room space bookings, we had over 448 hours. So that was an increase of 20% since 2023. As far as for Bernie Custis School, so we had allotted four, over 400 hours for Bernie Custis, although they only utilized 200, just over 220 hours for 2024. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Manager Gatto. If I, before we go to questions, if I could have a mover and secondor to put the report on the floor, seeing trustee Felix Miller, thank you, and secondor Counselor Taddison. And now if we could go ahead and put the report on the floor, to which I will take questions, and I'm sure there'll be a few, looking to my trustee colleagues initially to see if there's some questions on the report. I see trustee Felix Miller, thank you, go ahead.
Thank you through you, Chair. I just wondered if city staff could elaborate. I'm seeing here that the availability of time is from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. That is for all community bookings, correct? And I wondered if staff just had available a further breakdown specifically of the hours that the school has been allotted. So I know that I have heard from community members and from staff at the school site that even though we do have access to those 400 hours, which we're very appreciative of, many of those hours are, you know, around the 7:00 a.m., which is not always feasible for the school's optimal use, right? So we're really not maximizing in terms of the school day for students' use, for staff use. And the biggest, biggest issue that we've been confronting is the ability to book in playoff games or regular season games due to, due to the availability and the hours that we need them. So I just wondered if staff had on hand a bit more information about whether those, the hours could be illustrated a little bit deeper. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair Felix Miller. I'll turn it over to Manager Gatto, please.
No, through the chair. So I'll just give you a high-level overview of how the school board books through Hamilton Stadium. So each August, the City Facility Coordinator from Hamilton Stadium confirms with.
on Thursdays or Fridays to review the following week's usage. This allows the facility coordinator to free up any unused time. So in a whole, that's how it works at the stadium. But again, I know it's difficult to facilitate the best times, the optimum times that the school would like to use the pitch. Thank you.
Okay, Manager Gatto, thank you so much. I'll look back to Chair Felix Miller, see if you have any supplemental questions.
Thank you, and through you, I very much appreciate that response from staff. It's, I think, really important for, for us as an organization when we're, you know, looking to really respond to the need that we're hearing from the Bernie Custis students, from their staff, from the, the community as a whole. I think folks do really need to understand that, you know, as just it's been described, we really do not have access to that field from about eight-thirty or nine throughout the course of the, the majority of the school day, the entirety of the school day, frankly. So I think that that's important for us to know. I appreciate the detail that was just shared. I think that it's also, you know, when you hear four hundred hours, that sounds like a wonderful number, but the reality is, is that the majority, you know, about half of that is also not necessarily usable time for us. So I think in terms of next steps, I would love for this information to, you know, follow the conversations that we're hoping to have from staff to staff, supported by this committee. I know that at our table, we have directed our own staff to, you know, undertake those, those conversations with city staff directly about what are the solutions available for us as partners to really respond to a need that is directly affecting both City of Hamilton residents and HWDSB families, and really is, is addressing the fact that, you know, the advancements that we were hoping to see in the community of Ward Three at Brightside Park just aren't happening in the, in the speed that we need them to happen. So I don't have any questions at the moment, but looking to the Chair to just, you know, from this table, if we can pass that information along for, for city staff to have at the ready for conversations that HWDSB is looking to have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair Felix Miller. In, in that direction, I'm wondering, are you making reference then to a request that this go to J-PAC for conversation? Or is there a different methodology in which you would see this taking place?
I thank you through you, Chair. I believe this conversation has started at J-PAC, so perhaps the Legislative Coordinator can give some guidance as to what the next steps would be. But just hopeful, hoping for the information that was shared today to follow whatever process it needs to follow for those conversations to be as fruitful as possible.
Okay, and I also see, thank you for that. And I also see that we do have the members of J-PAC in the room here. So would it be most appropriate, Elsie, if we offer direction, that the report be forwarded to the J-PAC Committee for ongoing conversations between the, the school board and the city? I think everybody's kind of follows the gist that we want to continue to dig into this. Would that be kind of legislatively the appropriate direction?
Yes, if members would like to do that, we can do that. We also have the Chair here of J-PAC, if he wanted to add anything to that.
Okay. So why don't we do this? I don't have an issue with entertaining a motion for direction, and I'm guessing that Chair Felix Miller, you'd be the mover of that. And, and I'd be happy to second that, to have the report go to J-PAC. And then perhaps we could ask, just for a quick comment from the J-PAC Chair here, just to ensure that everybody's on the same page in terms of ongoing conversation, knowing some of the limitations that have been expressed. But I think that the, the Board is asking for some very important conversations to continue to take place. So if I could first do the, the motion.
I've got a lot of questions before I do the motion.
Well, let's make the motion. We can have the questions. So I've got the mover as Chair Felix Miller, myself as Vice Chair in this role, Counselor Beatty, and then I'd entertain questions on the motion, which I hope is abundantly clear to have this report sent to J-PAC for ongoing conversations between the Board and the city. And if there are questions on the motion, I will look to my colleagues now to entertain those. Seeing Counselor Taddison, please.
It's not so much questions on the motion, just questions about the presentation. So can I entertain those now, or should we vote first?
Let's vote first, and then we can come back to the, the body of the report. So we've got a motion on the floor now to offer direction. So if I could see a show of hands of all in favor of the direction, and that is unanimous. Thank you, colleagues. And now we'll go back to the report itself. And I see and recognize Counselor Taddison.
So I just wanted to ask a couple of questions to the staff. Basically, what I heard was it was eight-thirty to ten-thirty with Forge, and then Tiger Cats get it from eleven to one-thirty? But they said that basically it's not available after one-thirty as well. So I need some clarification on that.
So through the Chair, in the license agreement, the, the Hamilton Tiger Cats get the pitch from eleven AM to three PM.
And they use that on a continuous basis, eleven AM to three PM? Or do they vacate the field sometimes early? Or if they're away on scheduling in Vancouver for that week, they're obviously not going to need the field. So are we investigating and offering that to the Board at those times?
So they have bye weeks. Well, that's a, that's a, that's a good question. I could speak to my facilitator coordinator and to see if they speak when it comes to bye weeks. So and further to that, you got to keep in mind their bye weeks are, so they just had one this past week, right? There's three bye weeks throughout the season. So I could follow up on that.
Yeah, no problem. I'm a season ticket holder, so I'm well aware of their schedule. I just know that, like, you know, they're half, they're going to be away for probably, like, other than Ottawa and stuff, for short trips. They're out west for extended periods of time. So I just, I know that those questions will be, will come up during the deeper conversations, but I think we can do better here, and I think we should aspire to do better for the Board. These students don't have a proper playground. I don't understand, there was many things that happened beforehand, why they don't have that, but, but we should, I know the Tiger Cats made a commitment to offering them good times when this, when we were in negotiations, and I don't know that, I'm glad to see that available hours are there, but I don't, I think we need to do better in making available hours that are practical. Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Taddison. And also just want to recognize, we've got guest trustee in the room with us, trustee Todd White has joined us, not a member per se of the committee, but welcome, trustee White, always happy to have you. Any follow-up questions pertaining to the report on the use of Hamilton Stadium field? And I don't see any other questions. I do want to go back to a statement I made earlier, just I've got the Chair of the J-PAC Committee here. If, if there could just be a little bit of a summary in terms of what the expectation of this committee is and the hopes of this committee is in terms of having those ongoing conversations, and that you don't have any additional information that you require from this body?
Through the Chair, Chris Hurstek, Acting Director of Facilities and Energy Management. As Chair of the J-PAC, I would just suggest a direction from the committee to instruct staff or direct staff to have those ongoing conversations at our last J-PAC Committee meeting on June third, I believe. We did start the conversation with the Board motion that was moved, I believe, in May. So we are having those conversations on the three sites that have been identified.
Marvelous. Thank you so much, Director Hurstek. Oh, I see trustee Paul Tutte has joined us as well. Welcome, trustee Tutte. Good to see you, sir.
Good afternoon, Chair. Thank you.
So we, just to bring you up to speed, trustee Tutte, we've just basically concluded the conversation on the usage of the field that, I always want to revert back to calling it Tim Hortons Field, it just rolls off the tongue so nicely. But the Hamilton Stadium, we just finished a rather robust conversation on that, but as a member, I just want to make sure that if you had come with some questions, that would be the time to ask them, else we're, we're ready to move on. So I'll just give you a second to see if you had any additional questions on that, sir.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the opportunity. No questions, Chair. Thank you.
Wonderful. So this has been duly moved and seconded, the report. I just need a show of hands to accept the report that's been presented. You get a show of hands there, and that is unanimous. Thank you, colleagues. We're moving on now to seven point two, which is stormwater fees. I understand that trustee Danko will kind of lead things off. And I do want to make note, we were unable to have potentially the right people in the room on the city side to fully flush this out, but I'm very eager to facilitate at least the opening of a robust conversation on it. So I'll leave it to trustee Danko and Vice Chair Danko to proceed, please.
Thank you so much. And through the Chair, appreciating that we don't have staff present to answer questions. I think I wanted to start the conversation because as people are likely aware, the city is implementing a stormwater fee that will be changing or coming into effect April of next year. And school boards are listed under institutional, the institutional category or non-residential, and the fee is based on our impervious surface areas, which includes rooftops and parking lots, which can be substantial for the school board. So we are anticipating a significant increase in fees. Like the city, we have to pass a balanced budget. This isn't something that's well-funded, and in fact, we're not well-funded in terms of facilities overall from the province. So I am sure the city can appreciate the, the challenge that presents. The, the questions that we have are really around mitigation of the fees. So there's work that we've done over the years, deep paving projects, rain gardens, which all could result in a credit of up to fifty percent for the stormwater fees because the city is providing opportunities for credits. But there is a reassessment process, a manual review, a site inspection possibly required. And there's a fairly short timeline in terms of, you know, this, this being implemented next April. And there's also questions around a green space credit, which is opposed to be automatically applied to reduce fees. So we have large green fields around our schools, but we also about city green space in a lot of cases. And so I think it would be really helpful to understand what we've been pre-approved for, what we qualify for, and if there can be some conversation around some relief relating to our, our, our school board's properties being situated next to green spaces. And lastly, you know, we just saw the Joint Property Asset Committee report, and we have a number of shared use agreements, shared parking lots. So I think the question around how is that being managed when we have a shared use agreement? Is, is the stormwater runoff from, say, a parking lot that's shared or a, a building that's shared, is that shared then with the city, or do we get a credit for that? So those are some of the key questions that come to mind for me. And I know that we have our senior manager, David Anderson, who might want to add. And it was looking for the, the right place to have that conversation, likely staff to staff, but also to flag that there's a number of considerations that may be a little more complex for us than for some other institutions. Thank you.
Thank you for that, trustee Danko. I wonder if Manager Anderson, still Manager Anderson?
Senior.
Senior Manager Anderson. I wouldn't want to demote you, sir. Senior Manager Anderson, if you have a comment. And perhaps similar to the last conversation, a lot of this does sound operational staff to staff to try to understand the nuances in this program. Maybe this could result in, in a direction in that level. I'll, I'll leave it to my trustee colleagues to, to see how they may want to proceed with this. But let's begin with Senior Manager Anderson's response, and then I think maybe we can go from there.
Great, thank you very much. And through the Chair, Dave Anderson, Senior Manager of Facility Services with the Board. So we did have some initial conversations at J-PAC on June third with staff and shared some of our concerns with the fee that was being implemented in, in August. And as trustee Danko, or in April, excuse me, as trustee Danko indicated, it's, it's a significant hit to our operating budget. We have gone online to the calculator and implemented calculations based on what we understand is hard surface aerial views is how, how the tool is generating the, the cost. And it does represent upwards of seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars to our annual operating budget, which is currently not budgeted for. And so if we look at implementation in April, our current budget that was just approved for twenty-five, twenty-six, we'd be looking at an additional three hundred and twenty-five thousand, plus or minus, to that specific contingency line, line item. So again, we did have some conversations with staff, perhaps if, if it is referred to J-PAC, there may be additional resources that are there to support by way of, by way of city staff. We did have conversation at Shared Leadership, and General Manager Zagarek did share that the calculator may not be taking into consideration credits from wastewater charges that would be offsetting somewhat. So still looking for some clarity around that, but it is, it is going to be an impact to our operating budget, as with other anchor institutions within the city, and I'm sure the city themselves. So we did, again, share some of those concerns and understand that permeable versus non-p permeable surfaces are already considered in that calculation. So I don't know that there's any further opportunities to seek credits, but we'd simply like to explore that and have further conversation. And, and to reiterate trustee Danko's comments, I think if there is an exemption process or procedure that would be considered, we'd, we'd certainly welcome that as well. Through the Chair.
Okay. Thank you for that, Senior Manager Dave Anderson. I'll turn it back to trustee Danko to see if you have any supplemental questions.
Thank you, and through the Chair. Senior Manager Anderson. I wouldn't want to demote you, sir. Senior Manager Anderson, if you have a comment. And perhaps similar to the last conversation, a lot of this does sound operational staff to staff to try to understand the nuances in this program. Maybe this could result in, in a direction in that level. I'll, I'll leave it to my trustee colleagues to, to see how they may want to proceed with this. But let's begin with Senior Manager Anderson's response, and then I think maybe we can go from there.
Great. Thank you very much. And through the Chair, Dave Anderson, Senior Manager, Facility Services with the Board. So we did have some initial conversations at J-PAC on June 3 with staff and shared some of our concerns with the fee that was being implemented in, in August. And as Trustee Danko, or in April, excuse me, as Trustee Danko indicated, it's, it's a significant hit to our operating budget. We have gone online to the calculator and implemented calculations based on what we understand is hard surface aerial views is how, how the tool is generating the, the cost. And it does represent upwards of $780,000 to our annual operating budget, which is currently not budgeted for. And so if we look at implementation in April, our current budget that was just approved for '25, '26, we'd be looking at an additional $325,000, plus or minus, to that specific contingency line, line item. So again, we did have some conversations with staff. Perhaps if, if it is referred to J-PAC, there may be additional resources that are there to support by way of, by way of city staff. We did have conversation at Shared Leadership, and General Manager Zagerak did share that the calculator may not be taking into consideration credits from wastewater charges that would be offsetting somewhat. So still looking for some clarity around that, but it is, it is going to be an impact to our operating budget, as with other anchor institutions within the city, and I'm sure the city themselves. So we did, again, share some of those concerns and understand that permeable versus non-permeable surfaces are already considered in that calculation. So I don't know that there's any further opportunities to seek credits, but we'd simply like to explore that and have further conversation. And, and to reiterate, Trustee Danko's comments, I think if there is an exemption process or procedure that would be considered, we'd, we'd certainly welcome that as well. Through the Chair.
Okay. Thank you for that, Senior Manager Dave Anderson. I'll turn it back to Trustee Danko to see if you have any supplemental questions.
Thank you. And through the Chair, you know, appreciating the initial discussions have started. There, there do appear to be opportunities, and I think questions, you know, about looking back towards what we've already done. Again, I've mentioned, like, deep paving projects are probably already accounted for. Rain gardens may not, and that is one of the mitigating factors that can lead to credits. A number of our schools have them. Are they positioned appropriately? Are they large enough? I'm not sure what the metrics are for, for measuring impact, but that, that is something that has been done at a number of different schools. But looking forward, I'm also wondering about, we have a number of schools that are going to tender, you know, for which we would have had a site plan generated in consultation with the city around parking requirements and whatnot. So with this being something that's, that's new from the city's perspective, and, you know, defining credits, looking at rooftop gardens, rain gardens, retention ponds, all of those things being factors that can, that can decrease our operating costs with respect to stormwater, I'm curious to know as well what the city is doing when looking at new projects that are coming online, that will lead to construction that can lead to increased operating costs for us long-term. Is, is there an opportunity to identify some, some opportunities to, you know, change the design of a parking space, a parking lot, so that it incorporates some kind of infrastructure that will mitigate the cost to the board? So those are, I think, important questions that we really want to jump on, given the timing of some of our, our new school builds that are coming online, and given that we've worked with the city to, to get site plan approval and whatnot. So, long story short, if the, if it's appropriate, I think directing our staff from our side to, to connect with city staff, to look at mitigation measures, to look at how the green space credits and the, you know, stormwater reducing infrastructure credits are applied, and to look at how the shared spaces are being calculated. I think those are three areas that there are probably opportunities for either credits or exemptions.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'm, I'm gonna see if there's a response from the city side. I know that we don't have necessarily the folks from that program area in the room currently. So I'll, I'll see if, Director Hurstek, if you have anything to start with. Obviously, there's going to need to be some direction, some follow-up between our two organizations at some point, but we'll start at the beginning with a quick response from the Director.
Through the Chair, as Senior Manager Anderson indicated, we did have preliminary discussions at our last J-PAC meeting. Unfortunately, we didn't have the appropriate city staff at that, but we would be glad to facilitate an additional meeting on this topic and invite the appropriate city staff so that school board staff could get the information that is required.
Okay. Is it best to offer direction from this table again, then, for an additional meeting as you proposed? Would that be suitable for you, Director?
Through the Chair, that would be appropriate.
Okay. So then I would entertain a motion for an additional meeting of, of J-PAC with the appropriate representatives from the city there to have further conversations about the stormwater management program. I'm gonna see most likely Counselor, or Trustee Danko, sorry.
Happy to move that. I think you've captured the essence, the intent of the motion. So if the clerk has any recommendations for specific wording, I'm happy to move that.
Okay. So I've got a seconder in Counselor Tatterson. So we'll just quickly move on the direction for that, and then we'll come back to further conversations on the subject matter. So if I could just see a show of hands, if that's clear with our staff, what the expectation is. Is he there? Okay, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you, colleagues. Okay. So I have Counselor Tatterson up next, and I'll, I'll look to see if there's any other committee members, and then we may have questions from noncommittee members as well who are in attendance. So I'll start with Counselor Tatterson, please.
I just have a question for the Senior Manager at the Board. When you're doing your calculations, did you, did you ever look at the comparison between, say, two similar schools, say, Belliclava and Lincoln Alexander, the exact same footprint, same school, one's urban, one's rural, one's connected to the built system, one's not? Did you actually do any comparisons? I'd like to, I'm curious to know if there was a difference between the stormwater management fees for those two schools, especially those two, and then considering all the other schools in the rural areas that aren't connected to the built system. I think there should be some credits that we might be able to look into, possibly.
So thank you for the question. And through the Chair, we utilized the city's online calculator, and I don't recall the specifics, but it'd be a great comparison. I do suggest, though, based on quickly reviewing the list that was generated, they were comparable in, in, in the amount that was being charged. And again, it's strictly built based on, at least our understanding, understanding is that the calculator is based on site area, permeable versus non-permeable spaces, doesn't consider any services, whether it's, you know, runoff to a ditch versus other.
Right, runoff to the ditch as opposed to runoff into the built system, which is the main reason why there's so many charges and, and the fees are so high. So, okay, I'll leave it at that, then. I did want, I would like to explore that. I know that we have, you know, worked with other areas that would call, I guess, green space and so forth, like with farmers. And so there is a green space credit that farmers can apply to. And, and I guess it would require a reconsideration of some kind of fees. However, there is a set amount, just so everyone understands, of like, whatever it is, 60 million. And if we take it away from collecting it from, say, one school, it has to come from somewhere else. So that's, that's the issue. Every time we take something from here, it has to be added on to another section. So just understanding that as we move forward. And I said, we'll do our best and continue to do our best to help moderate those costs.
Thank you, Counselor. And I see Trustee and Chair of the Board, Maria Felix-Miller, up next on the speaker's list. You are muted still. You could reset yourself and start over.
Apologies. Thank you through you, Chair. I wanted to just share some remarks. I really appreciate Counselor Tatterson's last point there. You know, we do understand that, that these fees are meant to be collected. We understand that the, the city of Hamilton has its own objectives and its, its own sort of operations that it needs to take care of. I did just want to highlight really that we, you know, if the conversation can explore exemption, that is, I think, something that we would be very excited about, understanding that it, it may not be feasible, but wanted to just really be very clear from our side of the table, that we would be looking to maximize savings wherever possible. And just hopeful, I think, you know, we just did discuss at length at our last City Board Liaison Committee Meeting, you know, really wanting to make this committee space and this table to be engaged and to be productive and to be clear in sort of its purpose. So really hopeful in the future for, for conversations such as these, to be part of the conversation, I think, earlier in the, in, in the process, earlier in the conversation in, in collaboration with the city of Hamilton, instead of perhaps feeling like we need to kind of go back and be reconsidered as a valued partner. So thank you so much to city staff who, you know, responded and, and are willing to undertake these conversations and to reconsider all the information for both of us. But yeah, just looking to, to make this committee kind of forward-looking as well, so that we can maybe have some of these conversations earlier in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Felix-Miller, and absolutely agree. And I think that now that we have ironed out some of the formatting complications of the previous iteration over the last two, two and a half years of this particular liaison committee, I'm hopeful that we'll be moving forward. And in that way, I wonder if I could ask, and if required, I'm happy to pass the Chair just temporarily to Counselor Tatterson. And it's either to our elected officials from the Board or to Board staff. During the formation of the stormwater rate program, it's my understanding that there was some consultation with some user groups. I, I know that there were some user groups that, that did not get properly consulted. I'm just trying to maybe understand, from my own learning, what was the consultation that you experienced as the Board in terms of the formation of this program from the city? Through Acting Chair Tatterson.
Anybody want to take that? Go ahead, Senior Manager.
Thank you very much. And through you, Acting Chair, I will offer that in my capacity as Senior Facilities Manager, I did not receive any form of communication from the city. The only correspondence or connection that I did receive was from the Chamber of Commerce, reaching out and advising that this was coming forward potentially, and they were working with anchor institutions to possibly challenge the proposed fee. But outside of that, I'm not aware of any correspondence.
Counselor BD.
Thank you. And through the Chair, that is excessively disappointing that we failed to engage with our, our partners at HWDSB on the formation of a program that, if I've got my numbers right, Senior Manager, is going to siphon $780,000 out of the classroom to go into the drain, to, to give the headline quote.
I do think it was with the, with the credit, if they apply for 325,000.
Irregardless, it's an awful lot of money that perhaps there could have been a solution if the city had properly engaged. And I'm not authorized to offer an apology, but I do feel disappointed that, that that didn't happen. So I'll take the Chair back from Counselor Tatterson.
You may have the Chair back.
All right. Any further questions as it pertains to stormwater fee, or any comment from staff, any follow-up? No? I see, I see our, our guest trustee has raised his hand. Go ahead, Trustee White.
Thank you very much, Chair, Counselor, former trustee. A couple brief comments. I think some of the difficulty on, on this topic, and we can kind of get to the nuts and bolts, but I think the, the theme, and often institutions come forward in front of city council and just say, now, this is a lot of money. You know, money is the issue. Reduce the amount of money we pay. But is that really the message and what this is about? And I think to frame it a little bit differently, and we've kind of touched on it, which is, it's not that HWDSB just doesn't want to pay money, because no one wants to optionally pay money. It's that we use and share the same space, and there's a lack of understanding historically of what the partnership between the city of Hamilton and HWDSB means. So for instance, we have a number of partnerships that are lucrative for both organizations. So on one hand, we forego a lot of payments that the Board could collect from the city for rental and usage and facilities and, and recreation and, and rec centers, et cetera. But on the other hand, then we have fees where we kind of take back dollars and vice versa. So on, on one hand, it, to me, it speaks to a greater issue of not understanding what the relationship or the partnership is. So why would we, for instance, rent a property to the city and vice versa? This is completely equal. At a dollar a year, to then go back and charge folks $70,000 on that site for stormwater? It doesn't make any sense. And then what would, what would the Board do? And, and again, let's just think of this quite realistically and tangibly. Do we write that back into the $1 a year contract and charge the money back? Because now that's a user fee, now charging the city back. But the chart is, the city is exempt, obviously, from stormwater on their facilities, right? So again, it goes back to what is the model and understanding when applied consistently in terms of what we, how we both benefit from each other. And of course, you know, the dollars can go up and down, and of course, it could be redistributed if it's not us, someone else has to pay. But at the end of the day, we just end up charging each other. And then there's, you know, bursts of wonderful partnerships where a counselor, take Ward 2, for instance, who puts dollars into recreation for the Board. And we've seen that in multiple wards across the city. And there's a huge chunk of change, which then gets canceled out by stormwater. So on one hand, a counselor's budget goes down to watch a general pool over here go up. So again, what does that mean? So when this is investigated further, so this is going to go back to staff, we sort of know what the answer is going to be, which is, this is the rule, and it applies to everyone. The question then is, if we were to look at the relationship and apply it, apply it fairly based on usage, partnerships, et cetera, what does that fee then look like? And that would require then counsel direction if there were a change after the fact. So I guess the question that I, I would have is, in terms of timing, when this applies, if we do identify, again, not just savings for the sake of savings, but savings based on not charging the same taxpayer twice or each other twice, when that's identified, what are those next steps? Does it come back to this body? Does it go to council? What are the steps that could be taken to look at that and assess it fairly? Not just an exemption for the sake of an exemption.
Certainly. And, and thank you for the question and commentary as well, understanding the importance of the partnership and, and the relationship of our two organizations. And that's one of the reasons I'm here, and I think there's a number of us around the table that, that feel similarly, is try to rekindle some of the, the past successes that we've had and rebuild that relationship in a meaningful way. But with that said, your question to the point was, what happens next? And in order for me to timeline that, I would look over to Elsie Versace, and I'm just trying to understand, our next meeting of Liaison Committee is September something or other?
September 25.
25. The J-PAC Committee meets next when? Do we have a date for J-PAC meeting next?
Through the Chair, I don't think it's been formalized, but usually it's October.
Usually October, okay. So I'm trying to just figure out the, the cart and the horse, which is coming first. We just made a motion for, I would call it a special convening of J-PAC to discuss the stormwater fee. Is there an opportunity that that would happen before October? I'm just trying, again, trying to get a timeline sense through.
Through the Chair, after this meeting, I'll discuss with Senior Manager Anderson on timing, and if it needs to be this month, or sorry, July or August, we'll arrange that special J-PAC meeting for that, those dates.
Okay. I would highly suggest that if there's a special J-PAC meeting that can be held over the summer, that would be able to report back into this Liaison Committee in September. Even that is, by all accounts, too late in summer sex. But at least the natural order, the natural flow would be J-PAC reporting to this body, this body then going to council. And if there's major impacts that J-PAC can report back to this body in terms of obstacles, an inability to understand the program, or an inability to devise ways to calculate some of the fees based on what some of the trustees have made notes, where we have shared facilities, where we have overlapping parking lots, who pays for what? If those issues can be identified very clearly and articulated back to this body, then the counselors here in, in the room and other counselors, I'm sure, would be able to better articulate and make the argument before all of council on the direct impact that, that this program is projected to have. And perhaps we can try to find a remediation at that, at that level. But at least that, I think, gives the, the flow of how it would be most effective. I see some nodding of the head. Okay. Follow-up, Trustee White, and then I've got Counselor Tatterson the second time.
Thank you. And, and just, just for follow-up, and I'm not sure if it would be helpful, but this work has been done in the past. And again, it's looking at big picture again. What is the totality of the partnership and facility impact citywide between the city and the Board? So we have inventories of those shared use agreements. So out of the 100 facilities that HWDSB maintains, how many have some level of shared use agreement with the city of Hamilton? And I would hazard a guess that it's almost two-thirds, three-quarters, more, you know, and then that can be small to a great capacity. So again, if we were to tangibly look at, you know, what is that footprint, what does that partnership look like, what does that shared use look like? What does that shared use look like? That's where you start to get a picture of what an exemption could look like. So if the City of Hamilton doesn't benefit and doesn't have a footprint on one of our properties, okay, then it's charged at whatever the fair rate is, because that's fair. But if the City of Hamilton uses a good portion and relies on that for their service delivery, which we support, maybe that whole site should be exempted. Because again, that's something that saves each other, you know, in terms of what that looks like. So I'm just trying to move things along in terms of what the thinking could be down the road for the next J-PAC meeting and then City Board Liaison Meeting. But that would be the model that I would look at to say is, let's not charge ourselves twice on the sites that we share. And if we can proactively provide those shared use agreements, which we have, and we've done the work, say, this is the footprint, then to me, that's the starting point for what a model could look like. So I'm just trying to speed things along and perhaps suggest that to staff and to the committee.
Okay. I think that that's well taken. I may see a response from Senior Manager Anderson. If I could, before he gets to that response, perhaps as an addendum to your suggestion, Trustee White, both the footprint, but perhaps the financial arrangement between the two organizations, you made mention of like a dollar a year rental agreement. What is the impact if the city is paying the school board a dollar a year, but then now collecting a much higher rate in terms of the stormwater? All of those nuanced pieces, I think, would be beneficial for the conversation at J-PAC. And I see some nodding heads, so I'd leave it to your organization to do that. But I'll turn now. I've offered far too much commentary, and I apologize. Senior Manager Dave Anderson, please.
Thank you very much, and through the Chair. So based on the online calculator on the city's website, we had calculated approximately $830,000. When we look at properties that are shared, such as West Mount, where the rec center is on our property, those values then reduce to about $778,000. So the calculator appears to be taking into consideration some of what those savings are. But to further address Trustee White's point, I think if we can have a further in-depth conversation around that with staff, it would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. So I think we've got a clear direction then for J-PAC to hold a special meeting over the summer to delve into this and report back to this body in our September meeting. And then that consideration will float up to both organizations, both at the board level and the city level. Any further questions on the topic matter, or have we sufficiently discussed it? I see Trustee Don Danko, please.
I believe you had Counselor Taddeuson on the speakers list already, though, if you would like to go to him first.
He was a little slow to the draw, so I'm going to give the floor to you. Go ahead.
Thank you. I do want to recognize, as the cameras moved around, I believe trustee Zatley, our newer Ward Four trustees in the room. Yes, I do see a wave, which you may have not met her before, so I just want to recognize that she's with us as well. And I think, really appreciate the conversation, you know, that the goal is to, one, figure out how we can mitigate our costs as a board, because it does have an impact. But ultimately, the Stormwater Fee has a good purpose, and the credits are based on mitigation in a lot of cases, or a green space situated where runoff is going into a green space. I think the conversation around the shared license agreements and shared spaces, even looking at childcare as a shared space in many of our schools that the city helps facilitate the funding for, should be part of that conversation. I don't know that we should be speaking in terms of exemption, per se, but an accurate calculation of what the board is responsible for for Stormwater Fees. And again, moving forward, how do we mitigate that? Because there is an opportunity to get credits based on a change in the runoff that's going into the Stormwater System. I totally understand, you know, the purpose of the fees and how important it is to actually fund that infrastructure and remove some of the pressure on it as we grow and intensify as a city. So I want to be mindful that, you know, we're not asking for special treatment, but we are asking for the relationships, the license agreements, the shared space, and mitigating factors to all be carefully considered so that we have a fair and accurate calculation from my perspective. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Danko. Trustee Zatley, I'm so sorry. We haven't met formally, and I'm so far away from, I mean, Dave Anderson had a full head of hair when I first met him. So I made the incorrect assumption that you may be with staff. My deepest apologies in recognizing you. And please feel free to flag me down if you do wish to speak. The typical mode of action here is that the committee members speak first, and then if there are additional trustees or counselors that join us, they'd get an opportunity to speak after all committee members have spoken. So if you did have anything to add, I'd happily recognize you at any time. Just wave your hand frantically, just like Counselor Taddeuson was doing a moment ago. And I'll leave it over to my colleague, Counselor Taddeuson now.
I'd just like to suggest to our city staff here that our members of J-PAC, that we actually invite the consultant who derived the program, ACOM, to that meeting, so that I know that, I thought that they were done their jobs now, but I was just asked, the Flamboro Chamber of Commerce had a presentation on Monday. ACOM did a big presentation virtually for us, explaining it to all the members who were there. I think they need to be at the table to hear this as well, because I think their recommendations are, or their understanding of it, helps guide the city with what's, they believe is fair. And I just think that more discussion and more light that we shine on it for ACOM, the better suggestions they can make.
Thank you, Counselor Taddeuson. I'm going to quickly glance to see if there's any further conversation. There was direction already given. Those motions have already been made, except I don't think there's any further motions required on this item. It's just, it is combined. Do we require a formal motion now, Elsie? Okay. So the wording of such would be, what is the wording that I'm looking for here?
I can share what I've put together.
One moment, please. Just want to make sure that I land this correctly. And that will be, so the motion is that J-PAC be directed to schedule an additional meeting where city staff, in collaboration with HWDSB staff, to further discuss Stormwater Fees, including, well, that got really big, including mitigation measures, the application of potential green space credits, and how shared spaces are being calculated with a report back to HWDSB Liaison Committee by September 25, 2025. Is that?
So I tried to capture everyone, and just let me know if you'd like anything changed.
Just want to.
What about a friendly?
Friendly amendment from my colleague from Ward 11?
Just so that the consultant, ACOM, be invited to that meeting by city staff?
Yep. Schedule depending, I would imagine. I'm just looking virtually to see if any of my trustee colleagues have any questions about the direction that's been offered here. And seeing none. Okay. If I could get a show of hands, all in favor of the motion as presented?
It was presented with my changes.
It was.
Oh, I didn't see it, sir.
It was amended. Okay. Thank you so much. That is unanimous. Colleagues, we're now moving on to 7.3, which is the Joint Property Assets Committee Meaning, Meet Meta, tripping over my words this morning, this afternoon. The Joint Property Asset Committee Minutes from October 3, 2024, and February 14, 2025. Is there any discussion on the minutes? And seeing none, if I could have a mover and a seconder to receive the minutes. Motion by Trustee Tut, seconded by Trustee Don Danko.
Just a correction, if I may, to the minutes. On 6-16, page 16 of 19, I think it's the second set of minutes, it references Hill Park and that they were consulting with the Ward Eight City Councilor, that would be the Ward Seven City Councilor.
Okay. I'm looking over to the Elsie to see how we make that correction. Oh, it's in the, it's in your minute. Okay. Who's taking the minutes over there from J-PAC? It was just a small correction that it was the Ward Seven Councilor, not the Ward Eight Councilor. Okay. I see the Director nodding his head, trustee, that we're going to make that correction in the minutes. Anything else? I've got it moved and seconded. If I could get a show of hands, all in favor, receiving the minutes? And that is unanimous. Thank you, colleagues, for moving on now to number eight, which is Items for Consideration. If I can have a mover and a seconder to put the Joint Property Asset Committee Terms of Reference on the floor for discussion. Moved by trustee somebody, trustee Tut, thank you, seconded by trustee Felix Miller. Some conversation on the Terms of Reference now. Any conversation on the Terms of Reference? Trustee Danko, please.
Thank you, and through the Chair, just wondering about the language used under meetings. The committee will endeavor to meet three times a year. Is that a promise or a hope? I know that we've had a couple of years in pandemic, you know, being a factor, where the J-PAC wasn't meeting on a regular basis. So our hope is that this is something that is committed to. So can I just get clarity on the intention around that language?
That's a fair question. I'll look to the Chair of the Committee, Director Hurstek, please.
Through the Chair, endeavor, in our opinion, the committee's opinion, is to meet three times during the school year. So yes, we are planning those meetings for fall, winter, and spring of each calendar school year.
Thank you.
No problem on that. Looking around, if I could pass the Chair very quickly to Counselor Taddeuson, did have a quick question.
Go ahead, sir. Through the Chair, please.
Through you, Chair. In terms of, in terms of the reporting structure, I think it's implied that the reporting structure of J-PAC comes back to this committee. It's not necessarily, I can't find it anywhere, written into the Terms of Reference. Is that required, that there's some formal formality to the reporting structure of J-PAC, that it would be coming back to this committee? Through you, Chair.
Through the Chair. I don't think it's necessarily implied within the Terms of Reference, but that has always been our practice. I believe during the last couple of years that we didn't meet as often as we did, so that I think that fell through the wayside of providing the minutes of the meeting. But that is our intention to bring the minutes of J-PAC to the Liaison Committee.
Okay. That's satisfactory to me. Any other questions on Terms of Reference for the J-PAC Committee? Seeing none, if I could, oh, my apologies, trustee Tut. Please proceed.
No, thank you, Chair. And just through you, I was just looking for some clarity on, under the heading of accountability, paragraph one there, it says, "to report to senior management sponsors at the city and board on all matters arising from the meeting." I was just curious to know what senior management sponsors means.
It's a very good question, trustee. I'll look to Director Hurstek for a reply, please.
Through the Chair, this clause implies that if there was something that was need of immediate assistance, immediate attention, that the J-PAC members from the city side would report to the general managers of the appropriate departments. But I will let Senior Manager Anderson reply from the board side of their senior management.
Thank you. Senior Manager Anderson, please.
Thank you very much, and through the Chair. So that would align with our response as well, so as needed, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Tut, any supplemental questions on that?
No, that's clear. I just thought it was odd to see the word sponsors in that line, but I think that clarification was helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions, colleagues, looking quickly around the room? So I believe we have this duly moved and seconded. Then we just look for a hand vote, please, all in favor of the adoption of the Terms of Reference. And that is unanimous. Thank you, colleagues. Moving on now to notices of motion. Are there any notices of motion? And I don't see any. So that leads us to, for some, the best part of the meeting, which is Item 12. Be it that there is no further business, the meeting is.
Is there an opportunity for further business? Or is that not written in?
It's not written in, but did you have a question just before? I haven't said the magic words yet. So we are still in session. I've got to.
I'll speak offline.
Okay. Very good. Thank you so much, colleagues. Look forward to seeing everybody back here, September 25, 2025. And thank you very much for a robust conversation. I like the direction that this committee is headed, and looking forward to seeing where we're going to go next. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.